Time now being six o'clock this time, we'll call this meeting to order. It's been the February meeting of the Dawson County Planning Commission. We'll begin with invocation from Tim Bennett, if you would.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you today, thank you for your love, mercy and grace. Thank you for your goodness, Lord. I just pray, Lord, during this meeting, everything that's said and done would first of all glorify you, be the best for this county and its citizens, Lord, and we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
As would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. This time we will have a roll call. Ms. Harmony, when you're ready. Has everyone voted?
Mine's not lighting up.
You're not lighting up?
It's not lighting up.
You probably got. I pushed the button, but it wouldn't let up, I don't know.
Mine was lit up, but it's not showing on here. Records show that the four members present are the four members of the planning commission at this time. We have a vacant seat from Emory Dooley. He's not here with us, we do not have his seat filled at the time. He is now a commissioner. That being said, under announcements, there will be a planning commission meeting on March the 16th, 2021. Gentlemen, I assume you've had opportunity to review the minutes from our last month. Is there any amendments? If not, is there a motion to adopt as presented?
Motion to adopt minutes is presented.
No second. Moving to second, all in favor. Again, I'm seeing three. All in favor, would you raise your hand, please? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion is carried four zero, the minutes from January are approved. The agenda as presented by staff, is there any amendments to it? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? A motion to approve?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, opposed. Okay, motion is carried four zero. If you're here tonight to speak either in favor or in opposition of any application and you have made more than $250 as a donation to any local official campaign, then there's a form that you will need to fill out and Harmony has that form here up at the desk in front of you. Under new business, tonight we'll begin with application for special use. Presentation of special use 21-01. Candy Parky is requesting a special use of tax mount parcel 067005 for the purpose of placing a second mobile home on five acres in RA zoning. Is someone here to speak for Ms. Candy Parky? If you would, please come forward to the podium. You'll find a piece of paper and a pen there on the podium. If you would, write your name and address on it, please. If you would, please state your name.
Candy Parky.
And would you give us a brief description as why you're needing this special use?
Yes, I need to help my mom.
Mic's not on. Hold on just a moment, your microphone's not on.
Okay. I'm needing to help my mom, she's getting older and disabled and she needs someone up there, she lives alone and she needs somebody to check on her often now.
So your mother currently resides on the property?
Yes.
She's living there, where are you living currently?
At 583 Lewis Grendel Road at Delonaga.
And you have a mobile home that you're counting on moving here, is that correct? Could you describe it for us?
It's a three bedroom, double wide. Tina Brown is the one that owns it right now and it's, we'll be moving it about a mile.
Okay.
And I think it's a.
So it's located on Tatum Trail? Would that be good? Would it be located on Tatum Trail right now?
Yes.
Okay, so it's that mobile home, okay.
Yes, it is. And she's wanting it moved off her property, so she's giving it to us and we'd like to move it on my mom, where my mom lives, to help her.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time we'll close it to board for discussion. Gentlemen, is there any discussion for the special use of allowance of a second mobile home on this piece of property? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moving a second, all in favor? Now wait a minute. So that, yeah, there's four of us here tonight, so that I don't lock y'all up. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion is carried three zero with one extension. That's me, I'm just corrupting things, so I won't. Since there's only four of us now. Okay. Application for rezone, presentation of ZA 20-27. Dawson County is requesting to rezone tax mount parcel 113-011 and 113-092 from CHB to RMF and CHB for the purpose of developing a commercial component and multifamily dwellings. Someone here to speak for Dawson County.
I will speak on behalf of Dawson County. If I can direct your attentions to the screen, I created a short PowerPoint presentation, but this is for ZA 20-27, which we're looking to rezone commercial highway business to commercial highway business and residential multifamily. So the history of this property is that it was originally rezoned from residential agriculture to commercial highway business in 2007, along with several other properties along the Lumpkin Campground and Highway 53. This particular property resides directly on the northeast corner of Highway 53 and Lumpkin Campground. This request, there was a request to rezone from commercial highway business to residential multifamily in 2019, which had a recommendation of approval by this, by the planning commission, but it was later denied by the Board of Commissioners, which brings us to this current application now. So some of the differences in the site plan, so I have the original site plan up there. The original site plan was 140 units, it spanned over 23, a little over 23 acres. The commercial highway business portion that was left of the property was around 1.7 acres. The new site plan has 120 acres or 120 units on 20 acres. The commercial highway business portion is, has grown over five acres and it shows a lot of more inter parcel connectivity, which as you know, in our 400 corridor, that's really what we're looking to see. As you know, that this, this area is very congested with traffic and if we can divert some of that traffic off of and around the businesses in that area would greatly benefit from being able to get off of 53 and off of Lumpkin Campground. The future land use for this property calls it out as commercial highway business, which residential multifamily and CHB are appropriate uses under that classification. The previous recommendation from this board was approval with the following stipulations, and I'll go ahead and just read those. Is one, the main entrance to the north should align with the commercial entrance to allow for a plus intersection. They also recommended that the final recommendations of the following, following traffic impact study. So number three, the developer shall address ZA 0708 stipulation five to indicate 20 foot of additional right of way for future expansion. And number four, the project shall meet current Dawson County storm water requirements during construction design phase. So those were the recommendations coming out of the planning commission the last time that this was heard. What the recommendations that are now being presented, and I'm just going to read through those real quick and they're up on the board, is one, the development shall be constructed substantially in compliance with the site plan attached as Exhibit A. And that is Exhibit A is to the right there. Number two, the owner shall conduct, construct a left turn lane from the end of the existing turn lane at SR 53 along the property frontage to the northernmost property line of this development prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the residential development. As, as you may know, we do have a, our Lumpkin Campground Road has a lot of traffic through it. And so that would, extending that turn lane would greatly not only benefit this development, but also the, I think it's Fort Dearborn across the street, because they have a lot of tractor trailers that come in and out. So that is a, an extremely important thing for the, for this corridor. Number three, the road connecting Lumpkin Campground Road to Prestige Lane shall be constructed, completed and open for passage prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the residential development and shall be built to county standards. This road shall be dedicated to Dawson County no sooner than at the completion of the vertical construction of the cur, commercial development. Obviously, that addresses the inter parcel connectivity. Number four, development as a pad ready site of the 5.36 plus or minus acres, acre commercial development, also called the commercial development, shown on the site plan shall be, shall commence and proceed simultaneously and continuously with the commencement of the development of the 20 plus or minus acre residential development shown on the site plan and must be completed as a pad ready site at or before the issuance of the 60th certificate of occupancy for the residential development. For the purpose of this stipulation, pad ready shall mean completion of grading to flat and immediate availability of water and sewer connections. So what we're looking to do with that stipulation is basically just make sure that the commercial site is developed as well with the residential and that they start going, they start going vertical on the commercial. So we don't end up with, you know, the townhomes and the residential portion and not the pad ready site, at least for the commercial development. Number five, upon the issuance of a, of the 60th certificate of occupancy for the residential development, actual vertical construction must commence on the commercial development before any additional certificate of occupancy will be issued for the residential development. And number six, the owner shall dedicate an additional 20 feet of right of way along the entire frontage of Lumpkin Campground and SR 53 prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. So as you can see, we worked with the applicant to try to stipulate, making sure that the commercial development is being developed simultaneously as the residential development, as well as the necessary right of ways are dedicated to the county so we can improve Lumpkin Campground and make sure that traffic flow through that area is, is adequate. And I will entertain any questions at this moment.
Any questions to the applicant?
The, the pedestrian, you have commercial and you've got residential. Is there been some thought put into some type of pedestrian friendly? Or what? In my experience is you're going to end up with pedestrian issues and that just needs to be looked into as a part of the development where the county isn't trying to address that at a later date when the pedestrians show up. So I would ask that, that be a part of the study.
Okay.
And that the county has that to work with the developer to deal with the thoughts around the pedestrian element and the crossings that may occur and where, where would be the best locations for that? Because you may end up with some pedestrian upgrades that need to happen between the commercial and the pedestrian element.
Absolutely, absolutely. And as they, it's going to have to be developed simultaneously. So as they come through and they submit plans, we're always looking to do that, but that is an excellent, that's an excellent point to bring up.
Ran into that before, we've ended up on the back end trying to figure out how to fix. All of a sudden you have pedestrians show up, you weren't there. You know, development comes in, you've got a pedestrian element and then you're trying to Band-Aid that or figure out a way. If, if you're able to work it out in the beginning of the development, it makes it a lot easier. So you're not trying to retrofit intersections and things like that. And the county ends up footing the bill, trying to come up with that, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? At this time, we'll close to the board for discussion. Do you have any discussion? ZA 1916, as presented by Dawson County. Seeing no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Approved with the stipulation, the, the study to include pedestrian amenities to work. Yeah, makes sense.
Absolutely, so the recommendation would be to approve and sorry, you'll have to amend your, your recommendation, but your recommendation will be to approve with these stipulations provided along with a additional look into a pedestrian element where, where the best locations for pedestrians to cross at.
Yes.
Second.
Moving a second, all in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Presentation of ZA 21-01, Lucas Ray is requesting to rezone tax mount parcel 104032 from RA to RSR MM for the purpose of subdivising the parcel per RSR MM guidelines. Is someone here to speak for Lucas Ray? If you would, please come forward. You'll find a piece of paper on the podium there as well as an ink pen. If you would, write your name and address on that piece of paper.
Hi, I'm Lucas Ray Senior. I'm requesting the change from RA to RSMR. Spoke with Mr. Kenley and Ms. Harmony a couple of weeks ago. My oldest son wanted to build a house and we've got a couple of quotes on building a house. They cannot afford to build a house at their young age. They're looking 250, 300,000 to build a house that would accommodate them and their children. So we have come forth to see if we could rezone to residential mobile home. There you go, okay. So I've given them an acre of land. Spoke with Harmony and Jamison, told them I could give them more land if I needed, but they wanted to go this route so we could do it on a one acre lot instead of a five acre lot. That advised me, this is going to be the easiest way for us to go instead of trying to fight a hardship case to put more than one mobile home on five acres. So I'm requesting that if we can do it this way, it'll be easier and then we can move forward to get their mobile home moved in. They'll be moving in a four bedroom, two bath mobile home, double wide, which would be setting off at a Wall River Road about, well, it's in between two churches, Cornerstone and Etowah. So my property backs up to both churches and the part that they will have will be in between the two churches also.
Do you have this mobile home picked out?
Yes, they have it picked out, but once everything clears, then they will start manufacturing the home.
Okay, so this will be a new construction?
Yes.
A new mobile home?
Yes. It'll be eight to 10 months before they can have it moved in.
And if I read correctly, you've already given some property to another child?
Yes.
Okay.
I give two acres to my daughter. And then this acre will go to my oldest son and then that leaves me with four acres left.
Okay.
To divide up into the family later on.
Any questions to applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, do you have any discussion? Over the RSR MM, seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
I'll say it. Moving a second to recommend approval, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Mr. Ray, we are recommending approval. This will be heard by the Board of Commissioners next month, the 18th, March the 18th. ZA 21-02, Alex Myers is requesting to rezone tax mount parcel 113-093-001 from RA to CIR for the purpose of relocating an existing transfer station and constructing a new facility. Is Mr. Myers here, please? Mr. Myers, if you would, please come forward. Write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
Thank you Chairman Hamby and Commissioners. So I'm Alex Myers. I'm an attorney here in Dawson County and I represent the landowners in this particular case as well as all the landowners or the constituent members of 400 Waste and Scrap LLC. The purpose of this project is going to be to basically do, do the good fortunes that 400 Waste and Scrap has had. They've reached their capacity or at least are seeing that in the near future. I'm, and just need to expand to be able to keep up with the volume that they're seeing and, and just be more prosperous here in the community. So what we're looking at is the actual TMP is a 15 acre parcel of land. We're actually only looking to rezone about 7.9 acres of that parcel. That's the only portion of that parcel that will be used for the new transfer station. And the reason why we're going to be doing this is because we want to be able to segregate the two portions of 400 Waste and Scrap, the waste portion and the scrap metal portion of it. Ultimately, what will happen is the current facility as it stands now that everybody knows will be the scrap metal portion of that facility. And with the new facility off of Easy Street, that will be the waste only portion of the operation. We're moved, we're wanting to go from what's currently zoned RA, want to move to CIR so that we can have that, which is what the other property is currently zoned. This is in line with the future land use maps that have had the entire area moving to CIR. And actually, we can actually go onto the next slide. And let's go onto the next slide. This is the actual parcel itself highlighted in the red box. The only property owners surrounding this parcel of land that are not actually physically related to the business are Bethel United Methodist Church and then, and that's the wooded area to the east. And the, to the northeast is Christian Fellowship Church. Those are the only two areas that are not physically related to the property owners in some way. Everything else is family land or business land that the, the property owners are included in. As far as, just to kind of give you a rough estimate as to the, we can move on to the site plan. This is kind of a rough base, it's not really showing up well on the TV. But the current facility at 400 Waste and Scrap, the tipping floor building in the back, it's about a 10,000 square foot building. The proposed building will be 20,000 square feet. So we're just going to double the capacity of this and actually be able to just make the process more efficient. I know that I use 400 Waste and Scrap myself and go in there on a Saturday morning. Sometimes it can be kind of rough to get in and out with the scales and everything else as all the commercial trucks and the loaders and everything else are coming through. So being able to segregate the two out will make that process be just that much more efficient for everybody involved. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions a little more specific than what I've given.
How much of this property will be impervious surface?
A vast, vast majority of it will be. I would probably venture to say 50 to 50% at least, just because the majority of it will have to have just, there's, there's a, there's a lot of topo issues on the property itself. So there will be some retaining walls that will need to be built and all. The entire pad around the tipping floor itself will be concrete. There, they are wanting to do a fair bit of just landscaping, your general grasswork type stuff, just to kind of make it aesthetically pleasing as a transfer station can be. But there will be a substantial portion of the, the ground that will be impervious, yes, sir.
And on the property of budding, the both church sites, is there a 50 foot buffer on that?
We are proposing a 50 foot buffer as well as the detention pond and additional land in between the detention pond and the buffer. So realistically, from the portion of the actual property, physical property line to the actual tipping floor, you're probably looking at about at least 100 plus feet of just grass and/or detention pond for stormwater. There would be a completely separate system for the leach water that goes for the, the actual trash water from, from the site. That's through pipes and tanks and everything else that would be in a different portion and completely separated from that stormwater.
So with 400 scrap and waste already in existence, they're very familiar with leach lakes, the water that goes along with it and how to take care of that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, they are. And my clients are extremely interested in making sure that the entire project maintains the federal, state and local guidelines and follows all those regulations they have to meet. The tipping floor itself, right now, just like it will be in the future, at least three sides of that would be completely enclosed. There's the potential that, you know, maybe 75% of that fourth side would be enclosed as well. And then of course a roof, to the, the building structure itself would be fairly enclosed for the, the transfer station. At the bottom of that tipping floor where you see the five load trucks, those are the actual 400 Waste and Scrap transfer trucks that would take the, the, the trash from this property out to the actual landfill itself. As well as you see the additional ones up on, adjacent to the tipping floor, there's about seven or so over there. Those are just staging area locations, so the trucks would be able to be parked there. No actual physical storage of any sort of product would be there at that time. No actual physical storage of any sort of product would be there at that time.
Any other questions to applicant? Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone speaking opposition to the application? Seeing none, this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, do you have any discussion? Relocation of Orange Crap and Waste? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
I'll say it. Moving to second to recommend approval, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Thank you, motion is carried, three zero with one abstention. Mr. Myers, this will be presented before the Board of Commissioners. You will need to present Thursday, March 18th. Z A twenty one dash zero three, Jim King is requesting to rezone tax map parcel zero nine six dash zero three six from RA to R S R for the purpose of subdividing the parcel per R S R standard. Mr. King, if you would, please come forward to the podium, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. If you would, for the record, please state your name, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim King, four sixteen overlooked circle, Dawsonville, Georgia. Here tonight representing Mr. and Mrs. Clemmons. They are seeking to rezone 8.75 acres at the corner of Thompson Road and Houston Hours Road in order to, they want to subdivide the 8.75 acres into five lots, one of which they will build their own personal home on. When Mr. Clemmons originally came to me and, and wanted to know about subdividing the property, of course, I told him it's, it's currently RA agriculture. And it's a five acre minimum. But I told him we could go to R S R, which is his next step down and which allowed for one acre lots, as long as you have public water and septic tank. And so when I originally divided the property, I divided into eight lots and presented that to Mr. Clemmons. And he came back and said that he had, you know, he was very, he was a lot more familiar with the site than I was. And he mentioned a, just a more rural character of it and the farmhouse behind it and farms down the street of it. And he said he'd like to make the lots a little larger. And and especially the, the one he was being respectful of the, the home adjacent to him. And he wanted to make that even the largest of them all. So anyway, several iterations back and forth, and we went, we came up with the, the plan that you're looking at tonight. The the southern, the southern most parcel is the one that Mr. Clemmons will be, and his wife will be building their personal home on. It's 2.42 acres. Each one of these lots are 120, a minimum of 125 foot in width, where the regulations don't require 100 feet in width. Also, the, as I mentioned, the regulations don't require a one acre lot, and these are lot one's 1.83, lot two is 1.39, lot three is 1.47, lot four is 1.38, and lot five, where he will be building is 2.42 acres. So there, in every, every way, we have exceeded the, the minimum requirements for the R S R and what could be done. If you take a look at the, the land use plan, it does meet the land use plan, future land use plan. It is in align with that. Also, if you look at the area in general, there's several one acre lots across the street and around in this area. So it's, it's very in keeping with the area. And I do have some, I have some pictures that I'd like to pass around. This one in particular is the one he, Mr. Clemmons was living off of Lula Garrett Road here in Dawson. And this is his house there, and he plans to build something very similar. So he's, he's, these are in, the homes will be in 500, six, five to $600,000 range, so.
Thanks, sir. First home that you showed me is his personal residence.
It is, yes.
And these others?
And that's, that's actually a home he lived in before that one, so that's.
So this is what he's looking at?
It is, yeah. And I, and he's, it, it'll be something similar to those, in char, very similar in character and price point. He has spoken to his neighbor, our neighbors, I'm not sure, but, and I believe they're here tonight. But I know one of the concerns was erosion control. Mr. Clemmons wants to keep as many trees as he can on just for the, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's got some pasture and some trees on it, but the idea would be to, to build the homes in the pastured areas and then overlook the trees and the forest below. I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal, if that's okay.
Hold on. Any questions to applicant? Thank you, Mr. King. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
Oh, I mean, my, my, the politician, see, and forget that. I passed out a little piece of paper to you gentlemen. I gave it to county commissioners over a month ago. The, as of following what I gave you, is that place to discuss PhD in economics is in charge of the economic department, University of Georgia. He's, has been since I pulled us up, you know, over the economic department of the state of Georgia at the request of the governor. Basically tells you that you can't keep adding houses because you're gonna drive people away because the infrastructure costs more than houses. So y'all approve and everything comes up here, okay? And you need to come down, lump your campground road, just sit there and watch for the morning and the evening, those people coming in from up north. They'll cut off on 400, they go through lump of campground road, fifty to sixty mile there, go on down to Dawson Forest Road, then cut over to 400, going to work. You don't got two separate apartments coming in there. Can't even get you to specify a turnaround, a turnaround someone that's coming the other way, where they go on. People gotta go, go, go. State highways got one right over there on 53 at Gober Road. They wait and turn, go in there toward the waterworks, go around them and go on, let them sit there and wait. But y'all don't do nothing like that. You see, you're, you're here for the good and the welfare of the citizens, you're not here for the developer. If you get on the internet, you'll find out that throughout the United States that I can find, every county commissioner has won their lawsuit because they didn't made a decision on zoning based on the safety and character of the citizens. They don't do it here in Dawson County. Go look at the rooftops. I'm a pre-baby member, I was born in 1940. So I won't have to put up with it, but the big senior citizens is coming behind me. And I feel sure they're gonna wind up, just like I have in Forsyth County. You've got senior citizens down there that's forced to move out of their house where they raised their family because they cannot pay the property taxes, had to move with their family. You're gonna have the same thing in Dawson County, so you're really showing respect for the citizens of Dawson County. Appreciate what you do, but somebody's leading you down the wrong road. I'm against any kind of resident development. You've got one house that's gotta be moved because it's got a, a river coming through, when it rains good, down through this, this piece of property, Mr. King. I resent you having to make this gentleman go up here and act like a developer and explain to you what they want. If the developer wants it, they can get his butt up here. They don't get it, don't hear it, okay? It's not that important to them, it's not very important to citizens either. He's not in charge of that, he's not in charge of presenting you what the developer wants. Developer getting here to explain to you what he wants himself. Does that make sense to y'all? I guess not. Anyway, you won't see me up here anymore because I have not, don't have the reflexes I once had. I don't like to drive after dark. And I've already made my last presentation to county commissioners, this will be my last one to you. So you don't have to put up with me no more. Okay? But you're killing Dawson County. And I've already turned down three of my grandchildren to not come here and build a house because they want to retire. I got another son that wants to come back, dad, I want to be here and look after you. I don't need him close to me to look after me. I can, I got the money to go where I want to, when I want to. But I didn't tell him, that's none of his business what I got. Okay? Can't, can't tell that you're in just everything. It don't work that way. So I thank you for what you're doing, for what you're doing, but most, but you need to make some changes for the good of Dawson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stires. Anyone else speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward. Write your name and address on the piece of paper that's there on the podium, please.
My name is Karen Smith. I live south of this property. So on the plat, I live on this property here, it's 21 acres here. And then this corner here is my property also. This area right here is a, the top of, this is a, let me show you. I'm more concerned about the drainage of this property. This is the top of the property right here, there's three drainage wells that go down through the property. This one, and this one goes around and floods my neighbors down into the creek. And this one right here floods my property right now. With five houses on this property, it's gonna be even worse. The water that comes off that hill, this hill is, see, there's a drainage well right here. Comes right here, and it also comes here and goes around this property here. So there's three of them. And then, and then what can start, also concerned is he's putting driveways on Houston Hours Road, which is more impermeable surface, surface that's gonna run down Houston Hours Road. And it's already flooding my pastures. Let me show you this. This is, this is just a regular rain, of heavy rain. This is, that's this, let me show you that here. It's, it's down here, he's getting ready to dig up all this, putting a water main in here, and then he's going to put all these five driveways through there, which is gonna, this is the, this is the low point of that hill, and this is my property. And it's all already eroding my pastures. So with all that, and this is the other side of my driveway, this is what, the white water. I couldn't catch the drainage swell, I could not catch the drainage swells last night because wasn't enough rain. But well, we've had two major rains last year. This is a culvert pipe on the creek that Georgia Power put in. That this is a, this was February 6th of last year. It pulled up those culvert pipes, that's how much force all this water rushes down from our property. And here's, here's the other parts. This is October 18th, it messed up the rest of the pulver pipes. Georgia Power came and took those, these are Georgia Power culvert pipes, they came and took them out of the creek. Then they had to go retake them out of the creek again. That's how much water comes down through there. And this is the top of that property. So I'm not crazy about putting five houses on that property. I think it's, I know he told me that he was gonna, I want an extensive erosion control plan and a grading plan. If he, if you proceed with this. He has talked to me twice about this. I'm still not very happy about it. I'm just, he said he promises to keep everything as it is, but I, you know, once you give him the rezoning, I don't know what's gonna happen. So I just wanted to put my point of view in here. I'm just, I'm hoping he would abide by his rules or the rules of this plat because I'm very concerned about it. We used to lease this property, I know this property, there's a lot of water runoff that comes off this. So, and he's gonna, he wants to invest with this, he wants to put all these houses at 2,000 square feet. Now I'm just worried about a 2,000 square foot house for $500,000. I just can't see that over there. So I don't know how, if he's telling me the truth or what, so I don't know what to believe with him. So it's up to y'all what, you know, what y'all decide. I'm not really upset. Sandra Evans lives down this side, she couldn't make it today. But her, her property gets flooded every time a big rain comes off that property. So that's what we're major concerned with.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. King. Mr. King, would you please come back to the podium? Mr. King, I'm not familiar with the property, I'm not familiar with
Yes.
the way, the, the land, but I'm, I'm a little familiar with, with storm water and what it, could a study be done to determine what measures could be put in place by this developer to stop or mitigate any additional storm water or it? Well, I know, I know he would be required to mitigate any additional storm water runoff that would be required as, because of his development. Is there anything that could be done as far as a study to determine if something could be done about what is going on right now?
One thing, and I failed to mention that the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Clemmons are here. They are back in the back. So if you do have anything for them, they, they're willing to answer. But one thing I'd like to point out is these five houses are, I dare to say probably less than 1% of this drainage basin. So they've already got a problem. To your question about how to, how to handle the existing problem, one thing I would think is maybe some, there's a, there is a valley that crosses a swale, as you mentioned, that goes through this property and down through their property. Maybe put some riprap check dams along through there just to slow the water down as it's going down the hill. It's not, it's not to slow their water down, it's to slow the existing water that's going down through.
Water coming off this property that it, it, and could determine what is that water and what can be done with that water, so it's.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I would recommend is, like I said, some, a couple of riprap check dams across there, you know? Just to, to slow it down and let it seep through.
Could that be a part of the development plans to have that looked into as far as storm water?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Is there road work, is it road water coming through?
There's some road water, and it's, I haven't measured the drainage, the drainage area for that basin, but it's a, you know, it's a pretty good, pretty good sized basin. But all the road, all the water off of Thompson Road right in that area comes down, there's a fairly good section of road.
And what is, what is your client gonna do just to protect the, the homes themselves? I mean, I guess they're gonna have to grade some channels around the houses or something. I mean, the water's coming into the front of the property now off Thompson or off Houston Hours Road?
Yeah, but it's getting in that swale before these houses, these houses, the swell kind of goes from Thompson down through the property, and these houses would be built up on the ridge.
So they, they won't be affected?
Correct, yes.
Is water coming across the road from a, a, a adjacent property causing the volume to be what it is, Jim?
I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't quite get that.
Is water coming from property across the road of this particular property that's coming across the road through this property to, the lady just spoke, into her property? Or is it all being generated off of this?
Off of Thompson, yes, but not, not off of Hughes Towers. It does not cross Hughes Towers Road.
Any other questions, the applicant? Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I mean, I think this is, you know, I know we recommend denial of the last few developments, but they were the high-density. This is more like what I like to see versus the, you know, two or three units per acre. I mean, I think this is.
And the price point.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's comparable to what's, well, probably even nicer, but lot size comparable to what's right across Thompson Road, I think, from it. I mean, you've got your small slots, 1.39 acre, 1.38 acres. I think that's, you know, fits with the character.
It's refreshing compared to what we have been seeing.
It's just, it's five lots.
I just would like to make sure that this particular development, or what they're planning on doing, isn't adding to, or before they develop that any opportunity to capture or keep water coming off this property is taken care of before the houses are put there and it's kind of locked everything in. So you really can't go regrade or do what's necessary to capture water that's coming off this property, that's creating some of the, if this property's water is creating problems for downstream.
Certainly, you can put that as a stipulation.
I'd like to have that as a stipulation. I'd recommend approval with the stipulation of that a water study be done to determine what water's being generated off this property, and that measures are put in place to stop any additional or measures are put in place to stop that water, as well as any, any additional issues that come out of the development that water's also captured.
Well, I think you want to stipulate maybe that the flows are not increased?
Yeah.
Over existing conditions, like whatever's happening now is not the property owner's fault.
Well, what I mean is, if there is water that is being, that's coming off this property, that that's, that that's worked out too.
Yeah, you want to, you want to stay controlled, you're not going to stop it.
Not stop it, control it or mitigate it or somehow slow it down, so it's not creating erosion problems, because once the houses are built, it's going to be difficult to go in there and fix anything that kind of want it to be looked at first.
So your recommendation is for approval with a stipulation that a study be done to mitigate the water?
Yes. I like that, I like the way you said that.
Is, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Can we get, can we get a comment from?
Would you like to comment mid, or can I get my second first? Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion dies for lack of a second. Mr. King, would you like to rebut?
Yes, sir, I, I guess my issue, my concern is causing my client to have to do, to fix 100 other people's problem or the other development, you know, something that's already existing there. When he is trying to do the right thing, he's only building five houses on eight acres and five very nice houses on acre. It's agricultural right now, they could go out and build chicken houses and barns and everything else that would generate far more runoff than these five houses.
Yeah, Matt, they could build a 10,000-square-foot house now, I guess, on the eight acres.
Yeah, they could build a 10,000-square-foot house and a 10,000-square-foot barn and a chicken house. So without anybody's permission, so.
Actually, it'd be difficult to build a chicken house with the setbacks for a chicken house.
Oh, okay.
In the lack of, it's only eight acres there.
I'm not saying he needs to fix other people's problem, what I'm saying is that mitigate water coming off this property.
Okay. Yep, that's.
Actually, what you're stating is that a study be done to see what could be done prior.
Yeah, I mean, the study could show that this will not, you know, it's such a small part of the basin that it's not going to have any effect, but.
Okay.
I don't know how big the basin is, but.
Okay. That's, that's fair.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Once again, we'll close the board for discussion, any discussion? See no further discussion, is there a motion?
Well, okay, I motion to recommend approval and a hydrology study be done. And the results be submitted to Public Works for for approval?
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion is withdrawn. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I motion to approve with this, with a hydrology study to be done to determine mitigation, if any, to slow or mitigate the water runoff from this property onto the adjacent property.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Moving to a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, any opposed? Motion is carried two one with one abstention. I told you I wouldn't lock y'all up tonight. Mr. King, this board has recommended approval with one stipulation. A stipulation being that a hydrology study be done. You will need to present before the Board of Commissioners Thursday, March 18th. Between now and then, you'll have plenty of time to work on any stipulations and any other presentation that you might have between now and then, but this board has recommended approval. Thank you. Updates, my plan and development, Mr. Jameson?
There are no updates at this time.
That brings us to letter K, which is adjournment. Gentlemen, at this time, we are adjourned. Thank you.